Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 3, 2015 regular city commission meeting. Could you all make sure your cellphones are turned completely off? And then would you stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic where all its saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Fess.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Boat.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Terry.
For our first order of business tonight, we need to move to executive session. Do I have a motion to move to ex-
Second.
It's moved in second to a move to executive session. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Boat.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Fess.
Aye. We'll be back shortly. Would be the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the February 12 Pickwick City Commission work session and the February 17, 2015 regular Pickwick City Commission meeting.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Yes, sir.
If I may, please, it's about minutes.
Hello, my name is Don Kukta, 516 Walker Street here in Pickwick. The meeting minutes from the last meeting are incorrect if they are as they were published online. It states in there, you know, when we had that meeting, there were a lot of people here for another issue, and the commission decided to move public comment to the front of the meeting. And I appeared at the end of that group with a different item in mind, talking about the proposed ordinance 3-15. The minutes, as they stand, do not reflect my comments, and they don't reflect that any public comment was made in reference to that ordinance. And I think you may remember that I came up here and made a point of saying to you that I was introducing a different topic at that time at the meeting. And so, the minutes, the minutes are incorrect, and I believe they should be amended, please.
Okay. Could we, commissioners, could we amend that to reflect the gentleman's comments at the end of the public comment on that issue? I think you were concerned about the stop, four-way stops?
Yeah.
Becky, could you?
I can check.
Could you add that?
Yeah, I can go back and add it, sure.
Do I have a motion to amend the-
I move we amend the minutes from the last commission meeting?
Without seeing the amendment, I would wait until the next meeting to receive those and then approve them.
Okay, thank you, Stacy.
Pass to the February 12, then.
Correct. So, right now, you have the-
The work session.
You could pass the work session, you're gonna table the-
Amended.
February 17 commission meeting minutes.
Okay, but we do have a motion to amend them. We wait to amend that the next time?
Right. So, right now, you have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
That included both sets of meeting minutes, so you're really gonna need to-
I just need a motion to accept the February 12 meeting.
I changed my motion to approval of the work session minutes and not the commission meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve the meeting minutes of the February 12 work session. All those in favor signify stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The minutes of the February 12, 15 Pickwick Commission work session have been approved, and the February 17 meeting-
You need a motion to table those minutes.
Needs to be tabled, so I need a motion to table those.
I move we table the minutes from the February 17 commission meeting?
Second.
Moved in second to table the minutes from the February 17 meeting. All those in favor signify stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The minutes for the 17th February meeting have been tabled. Okay, we'll get that taken care of, sir. Moving to new business, ordinance number 4-15, this is the first reading of-
The old business. Go back up one.
Old business. Ordinance number 3-15, this is the third reading.
An ordinance amending section 77.01 Traffic Schedules adopted Schedule 4 and 7 of the Pickwick Code relating to four-way stop intersections and traffic control devices.
Ms. Haverne will provide the staff report.
Thank you. This ordinance would allow us to modify the traffic schedule to reflect the proposed changes that we have planned as part of the Safe Routes to Schools project. If you recall, some of those changes were to modify some of the existing traffic or the existing intersections. Park Avenue and Westview, we would convert that from a two-way stop to a four-way stop. Park and Parkway Drive, we'd do the same there, convert that from a two-way to a four-way. The College Street Corridor, College and Ash, College and Green, and College and North, we are proposing to remove the traffic signals and make those two-way streets with College being the through street. Same thing with Broadway and North, remove that traffic signal with North being the stop street. And then Downing and High and Downing and Ash, remove the traffic signals there and make those four-way stops.
I think there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting regarding the traffic light at Broadway and North, and I think the city manager-
Yes, let me address that, because I know there was some concern by the commission and others who were concerned about a number of things. First of all, this is a project led by ODOT and paid for by ODOT from the standpoint of design and construction, and one of the things we have to do is follow the ODOT requirements in meeting the project. However, one of the things that we can do, because it would not require any additional design work, I know that the commission was adamant about keeping the Broadway and North traffic signal, and we can do that as a non-perform item. It doesn't require any design changes, so we can simply not do that and leave that traffic signal where it is. The other items would require, any type of changes would require design changes, which we can't do at this point. However, one of the things that we do when these changes are made is we have an evaluation period that we're able to look at, and if there are any issues, we can make changes at that time. At the same time, once the ODOT project is turned back over to the city, we also can make changes. So, the real choice tonight is going forward with this project the way it's proposed and designed at this time, except for not removing the traffic signal at Broadway and North and making adjustments later if that is what's needed, once we do the evaluation. Or the other alternative is not to do the project at all, because we would not be able to meet the design requirements, because that is past due for ODOT. So, that's kind of the choice tonight, and we're that the commission can address that from this point.
Thank you, Gary. I think the major concern, as you said, was the light at Broadway and North because of the school there and the children crossing there where the school is. So, commissioners, what's your desire?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance and strike, removing, strike the Broadway and North Street section of that, get it out of the whole thing.
Second.
It's moved in second to amend the ordinance to remove the statement that the Broadway and North light would be removed, and that would indicate we're going to leave that as is. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Okay.
Don Kukta, 516 Walker Street, back again. We've just talked, I've just heard you talk about non-removal of the light at North and Broadway. I'd like to remind the commission, if I may, please, that at the first reading, Mr. McMackin from the YMCA was here, very concerned about the intersection there at Downing and High Streets, and it's a similar safety issue. On my way here tonight, I came through that intersection, and as I sat at the red light waiting for it to change, suddenly two young boys, about 12 or 13, appeared over my right shoulder, hopped over the snow mounds, and dashed diagonally across the street from the old bank building towards the old, the regular Y building. Now, if there isn't anything that indicates a danger or a problem or actions that ought to be taken to make sure that we're as safe as we can possibly be, I can't think of anything more blatant. Kids like to run and play. Kids are not going to watch the stoplights or the stop signs. And if that intersection had been only a two-way stop, the likelihood that a vehicle could be proceeding through that intersection at a higher rate of speed, I think, is really something to consider here. Likewise, when we talk about, you've sort of glossed over the issue of college. Again, it's the same issue. It's a long stretch of street. There are a great many people who are not always vehicle operators, but are oftentimes pedestrians, and may want to cross somewhere between High Street and Park Avenue. It seems just inconceivable that anyone is going to walk two or three blocks out of their way to cross at a stop sign or at a stoplight to come all the way back two or three blocks, when where they really wanted to go was simply across the street. And we can multiply that, again, by children playing. At North Street, just beyond College is Kiwanis Park, and I'd like to remind you that in the summertime, students from Pickwick Catholic are oftentimes taken to Kiwanis Park for exercise and play. So, there are people who are gonna be crossing here on a regular basis. And I think, I'm a little surprised that these are the kinds of issues that seem to not be part of this exam that was done for a Safe Routes to Schools program, because there are a lot of things about this that I find are patently not safe. Finally, my own pet peeve, and I am sorry to bring it up once again, but the crosswalk with the rapid flashing yellow lights. I mentioned at the last meeting, I'll mention it briefly again here. Flashing yellow lights may get your attention, but they don't mean stop, they mean caution. And if you remember at the last meeting, and I will apologize ahead of time, while the manufacturer's promotional video was playing, there was someone in the audience who let out with a fairly large and loud guffaw, and that was me. And the reason was that that manufacturer was admitting during that video that that device only had an 80% compliance rate. That's dangerous. There are eight of you sitting here at this dais, and if we include the next few people around the room to 10, that means that two of you are likely to be hit by a car if you're using that device. You're as likely to be hit as anybody might be. Compound that with the fact that even though we talk about training in the school, in particular being Pickwick Catholic, that would be the closest school, but I'm sure there'd be other schoolchildren going to the new school on Park Avenue, they're going to want to hit that button and dash across that street. And again, that light might get somebody's attention, but maybe too late. And a yellow light, once again, does not mean stop, it only means caution. As I mentioned to one of the commissioners at the end of the last meeting, you know, we have school buses all over town, and they stop anywhere that they will in order to let students off. And when they stop, those wings of stop signs with red flashing lights on them come out next to those buses. And we are mandated by law not to pass those buses. It is dangerous, and we can be fined, and we can be put in jail for that. I don't see some effort to retard the travel on these streets to be any less important than those issues. We have children, we have regular adult pedestrians, we have older folk who will be crossing these streets to get from one place to another, and I think we need to do something. I agree, there's probably too many lights on College, that's fine, but we need to do something, I believe, to retard the travel, to make it safer all around for people in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ron Cooper, I live at 901 West. Hi. Would you like, gentlemen, before me, I'm talking about Broadway and North, the light up there. It has been there, been used as a school light, and it's still being used as a school light. And it's just like, if you take that light away, why not the ones on Nickland and Park Avenue or Park Avenue and College? They're about the same thing. Think about what you're doing. You're not thinking. And that should be kept there, right there, and then there should need a four-way stop or stop sign, stop light, keeping on, I'd say either College and Green or College and North, one of the two, because if you don't put, we're gonna have a racetrack through the whole center of town. It's dangerous going along there. If you look at us coming down Park Avenue, quite a few people go quite fast, more than 35 miles an hour or 40 miles an hour coming down. And you're gonna have the same problem on College. If you take all the stoplights and stop signs and present them, they're two-way stops like you're talking about. And also Downing and High. That's a dangerous intersection. You talk about safety for kids. You gotta have that there, a light there. If you don't think about it, you're wrong, all wrong, if you vote for this thing. The safety school thing, you're saying safety school by ODOT is completely at farce. They're not looking at safety, they're looking at just getting rid of stoplights and stuff and things like this, and it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Francis, I live at 1810 West Parkway. I've been coming to these commission meetings for a long time, and I have never once saw citizens' opinion ever, ever changed, the opinion of this commission, not once. As soon as Bill and Judy want the light to stay, it stays. Can you explain that to me? Not once have I ever saw your opinion changed. Now, all of a sudden, two commissioners want it, so it stays. Come on, Mr. Huff.
I'm sorry, Joe, I also would want that light to stay there, so that's more than two commissioners. Next, Ms.?
Linda Henry, 1062 Boone Street. I'm a parent of a child, two kids that go to Pickwick Catholic School, and to make College all two-way stop there just makes no sense, because my kids, they don't go walk on their own yet, but they will by the spring. They won't be able to go safely across College without having to go all the way to Park and then go two blocks over to North Street. I mean, you have to have at least a four-way stop at either North or Green. And, you know, the whole idea, but the flashing light thing, I pay for my kids to go to Pickwick Catholic, and I don't want their time there to be spent learning how to use this device. So, it makes more sense to have either a two-way stop or a four-way or the traffic light. So, thank you.
You're talking, Linda, you're talking about on College Street?
On College, yes.
Okay.
Since it seems like Broadway is determined it's not gonna be taken down, so.
Yeah, that's not gonna be taken down, thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, Jim McMackin with the Miami County Y. I think I addressed the commission at the first reading of this. I specifically have not educated myself on many of the other intersections in town, with the exception being High and Downing. I've sent a couple emails to the commissioners. Our request was that, obviously, the streetlights be removed and turned into a four-way stop, and I believe that's going to happen. The second request that we had was that we consider installing some curb bump outs at that intersection. I want to reiterate that that's still our request. That intersection is certainly well-traveled by pedestrians and vehicles. A couple hundred individuals per day are probably crossing at that intersection. Anything we could do, anything we could throw at that intersection to make it as safe as possible certainly makes the best sense to me and the Y, so.
And Jim, you're advocating that the four-way stop or the stop and the bump outs are the best way to go?
Yes.
And did I not understand that you have sat there and observed the traffic?
I have, yeah. About two hours worth of traffic. Many, there's many examples of pedestrians and vehicles almost getting into collisions, individuals that'll step out off the sidewalk, have to back off the sidewalk. That intersection is wide. At least two of the entrances into the intersection have what appear to be a right-hand-only lane. I don't think they were ever intended to be right-hand-only lanes, but they're used for that. So, you know, pedestrians step out into the street, they have at least an extra eight or nine feet of road to cross. So, again, the bump outs would certainly reduce the amount of time that those pedestrians are in that right-of-way.
And Jim, I think you have a problem with the kids crossing from the parking lot diagonally across there, don't you?
We do, yeah, exactly. The High Street parking lot, many of our members use that parking lot, they do not walk up to the intersection to cross, they jaywalk, for lack of a better term. I think if that traffic is slowed down as much as possible, be it with four-way stops, curb bump outs, those individuals will have a certainly safer time crossing the street there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Nick Alexander, 713 Roosevelt. With Green Street, there's a section where it's marked as having a Green Street spur of the path. If that actually exists, which is not on a map, although it is marked with a sign on Green Street, could that not be then extended to College to create a pedestrian right-of-way?
Gary, do you know what he's referring to?
I'm not aware of what you're talking about, so we'd have to look into it.
Well, like I said, on Green Street, there's a section of bike path with, well, path, whatever that acronym ends up meaning. It's not on any of the maps for whatever reason, but it is posted with a sign. All it would need-
And where is this posted, Nick?
I want to say approximately Lincoln Street.
Where?
Lincoln.
On Lincoln Street?
Probably, might be off by about a block either direction. Again, I'm not seeing on any of the maps.
What street?
Green.
Green, okay.
But that would actually be a bisector of the basic range that everyone's discussing here, creating a pedestrian right-of-way such as what is at, for the rest of the bike path in the loop, potentially with yellow flashing, wouldn't necessarily be a modification to the plan for the interchanges themselves, but an continuation of the bike path system, since there's already a posted marking of the bike path in that region.
We just have to look at it, I'm just not, I'm not familiar with it enough to say, so we wouldn't be able to answer that question tonight.
And again, I'm gonna apologize.
Certainly something we can look at.
There's nowhere on the maps that I've been finding where it is actually designated officially, but again, there is a sign that I've laughed at a dozen times as I've cycled past it or run past it, because there's nothing marked there.
And the sign says what?
Green Street Spur, P-A-T-H.
We'll look at it and see, just not familiar.
Hey, Nick, is that the place where the bricks are, the red bricks in the concrete?
I believe so.
And it goes up the one side of the street, all the way from downtown, all the way to the levee?
Yeah, I don't remember seeing any of the, this would be by French Oil.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I don't believe the bricks go all that way downtown. They might, but I've only seen, remember them maybe a block or two.
Oh, okay, I thought those are the ones that went all the way downtown.
It might, but I don't remember them.
Yeah, it goes across all the north-south streets. There's a brick with a concrete divider that goes all the way, I thought it went all the way from Main Street all the way up, but maybe it doesn't.
Yeah, but again, that would be a logical bisector of that section and may not necessarily be opposed to the ODOT system.
So, your question is, your question and your comment is for us to look at what, Nick?
Well, extending a section of path to make it official and put a pedestrian crossing, which, again, would not necessarily be part of the ODOT's plan, but a continuation of what you already have in place.
On College Street?
To cross the bisect College between High Street and Park by creating a pedestrian right-of-way, which could have yellow flashing lights to designate as a pedestrian crossing, which would slow down the traffic and could be done possibly without actually interfering with the ODOT plan.
Again, I'm, we're just not familiar, we'd have to look at, see what it is, so.
Okay.
Not sure, so.
Thank you. One of the things that the city manager mentioned that I think maybe was overlooked is, actually, two things. One, after, when this goes into effect and ODOT comes in to do that plan, the first thing is that we have a period of time when we look at that and see, make sure things are working the way they need to work. The second part is that after ODOT has completed this and turned it back to the commission, the commission can then, if there's a need and it's seen that there's a need to put a four-way stop on College Street, that can be done. What we're doing right now is approving a plan that ODOT has in place, with the only exception because of the not, the not having a need to change the design, where we're going to go, if we go forward with this, it's with the exception of taking the light down at Downing North. This does not mean that in the future there cannot be a four-way stop on College Street if it's required and needed. So, you know, we're not, it's not a definite, everything is gonna go just the way this says here. I mean, the thing is, is we are gonna make the one change, because it doesn't require to design changes, which we're doing, I think, the second of March if we were to keep it. Otherwise, we give up the whole program and don't do any of it. And I don't think that's really what we have in mind right now. Commissioners, can you comment?
Well, I feel, understand the concerns of the people that have been up there talking. However, the state has run a traffic survey on College Street, and I think this is why they come up with their suggestions. It is not bumper-to-bumper traffic. And I feel that, is it a good plan? No, it's not really a good plan, but it's workable, because it is not really heavily traffic. I mean, it's not bumper-to-bumper, bumper-to-bumper. I can remember when there wasn't any stops on that whole street, except at College and High years ago, back way before people were around. And never had much problem, as far as I could see.
Yeah.
But that's neither here nor there, but I think that the state based their Safe Routes to School thing on the traffic count, the survey that they made. They don't do these things just by, they run a survey and they count cars, and that's how they come up with this.
Well, and again, I want to reiterate that this is not dry, set in stone. If we pass this, this means we can still, we still will continually review this, watch it. I see our engineer nodding her head, which she will continually look at this. If there is any issues, it will be corrected, and we can do that once we have this in place. So, if you have concerns about a four-way stop on College rather than a two-way, if that proves to be the case, then we certainly can look at putting those up. That's a very simple thing to do.
I have a comment about the flashers. We just got back from a little short trip to Florida and along Gulf Boulevard, which runs along the Gulf, up towards Clearwater. We happened upon an accident at a flasher. They have a lot of flashers there, and like Bill said, they also have bumper-to-bumper traffic in the wintertime. But we observed a gentleman, not an old guy, he looked a lot younger than me, on the side of the road, being helped by paramedics, and he crossed at a flasher. It was right there, and there are many of them there. So, the folks that we were with who are wintering down there have observed that people don't pay very good attention to those flashers. They want to get across the street and they go, whether, you know, whether he came out and the cars just didn't see him. and the cars just didn't seem, I don't know what, but nevertheless, you know, we did see an accident there and it just brought that to mind. And I too am concerned about kids pushing buttons just because there are buttons to push, because I know kids will do that. I think the traffic on High Street, on High Street and College, the four-way stop there seems to be working well. I didn't think it would be. I think that if there's any problem with the corners there at Green or North, that we do need to keep an eye on that. If there's no way to take that corner out of, out of this, out of consideration with this program, you know, I'd hate just to drop the program altogether because of that. But I do think that we need to keep an eye on that corner. And, and I'm also concerned about whether or not we're talking about bump outs on College Street within the plan. No? Good. Okay.
I, I think probably all the commissioners are in agreement that this is something that needs to be followed up. Amy, I'm sure that you plan to do that anyway, but followed up upon and to make sure that those corners are safe and if more is required there, that that'll be taken care of.
Well, you know, I think at Downing and, and High Street, if they take out the turn lanes and bring two more parking spots up on each side, that would get rid of the turn lane, and you wouldn't need a bump out. You'd have a car there.
Well, I know there was a tremendous amount of concern about our removing the light at College and High. We haven't had any issues at all. I think the chief can, you haven't had any issues there, have you, Bruce?
Not intersection-related, no.
Okay. So, and I've had people say to me, I was opposed to that, but I see now that the traffic is moving better and more smoothly there. So, sometimes I think we just have to try things and make sure that they, they're working. And that's what we intend to do with, with these changes that we plan to make here.
Well, I, I think the four-way stop, and I can tell you the, the corner there by the post office, for years that was a stoplight. Now, when there's a four-way stop, people are waiting and looking, is it your turn, is it your turn, is it your turn? Everybody stops. So you talk about being stopped for traffic. People are stopping way too long. So, I think they'll just get used to it, but I've noticed many times on that corner, people just don't realize whose turn it is and nobody wants to pull out first.
So commissioners, is there anyone else in the audience that wants to address?
So I hear right now we're not doing the bump outs. Is that right?
We are doing the bump outs.
We are doing the bump outs.
She asked, she asked on College.
The Y has requested.
Okay, so the Y is continuing there. Okay.
Hi, name's Gina Huffman. My daughter spoke earlier. I'm at 1152, 50 Fisher. You know, I heard them say they count cars, that's fine. Did they count kids that use those intersections?
I think, do they, they do pedestrian counts as well, don't they, Amy?
Yes, as part of this study, we had an actually evaluation. We included the parents of the kids at the school. We got maps of their walking routes, so we have an indication of where the kids are walking from, but all that was looked at as part of this as well.
The study. I thought they did pedestrian counts as well with the kids and the adults. So commissioners, do you have a?
Well, I had a motion to eliminate the light, eliminate that section out. Did we ever vote on that?
No, there's a motion and a second on the floor to amend this ordinance on a third reading to remove Broadway and North Street.
I have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye. Ordinance number three dash fifteen has been amended. Do I have a motion to accept ordinance number three dash fifteen?
As amended.
As amended.
I move with a dom resolution, or ordinance number three dash fifteen as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number three dash fifteen as amended. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner vote?
Nay.
Ordinance number three dash fifteen has been adopted on a vote of four to one. We'll move on now to new business. Ordinance number four dash fifteen.
An ordinance amending section ninety-four point twenty-one of the Pickle Code relating to fees for use of park facilities.
This is the first reading and Mr. Brian Brookhart will provide the staff report tonight.
Thank you. In the February Park Board meeting, board members unanimously approved raising the park board, the park facility fees upon commission's approval. The last time the fee, the park facility fees were raised were in two thousand and nine. The increase in the fees would help offset operating costs and maintenance on the buildings. Attached, you will find Exhibit B shows the current rental fees and Exhibit C, the next page, shows the proposed rental fees. City residents will continue to get a discounted rate on those fees.
So commissioners, do you have any questions?
You know, back in two thousand and nine when we raised them the last time, I thought we should have raised them more at that time because the, the rental rates for those facilities are very, very reasonable compared to the surrounding area. That's why people come here, because they're so cheap. This, this herd gets it up and it's still not enough really because I, I know out there at the dining hall, how many times we had to go and clean when they didn't? The people that rented it and all that, it's just a lot of work for us. We might as well get a reasonable fee for it when we originally do it. And I have no problem with this.
Anything else, commissioners?
On, on the Exhibit A, say for example, Mo Park is going from seventy-five to a hundred for Monday through Thursday. It does, it doesn't say if this is a resident or non-residential rate on Exhibit A, does it?
No, that does not state that there, and that is the...
I think this is the actual code.
It's, it's on Exhibit A, Section C. Residents who live within the Pickle Corporation, the minutes receive from Mo Park and Fountain Park discount in accordance with Exhibit C, so you need to reference the second document. But Section C on Exhibit A indicates there's the residential discount for Mo Park.
Okay.
Okay.
What is the, what is the percentage discount then?
Ten percent, it says.
No, ten percent's been eliminated.
Oh, I see that.
So ten percent was the old discount or current discount, if you will. I think it's around twenty-five percent is the discount, isn't it?
They chose just to use a discounted rate instead of specifying a percentage.
So what would that discounted rate be, Brian?
As shown in Exhibit C, if you notice where the city residents will be paying, would pay, for Fountain Park Dining Hall, for example, they would pay seventy-five dollars and a non-resident would pay one hundred dollars. So, for Fountain Dining Hall, for example, they would pay twenty-five dollars less Monday through Thursday. And the same on Friday through Sunday. For non-residents, it would be a hundred and twenty-five, and for city residents, it would show a hundred dollars.
Should that be spelled out somewhere?
Do what?
Should that be spelled out somewhere?
It is, isn't it, Judy?
It is.
Exhibit C?
It is an exhibit C.
Look on Exhibit C.
Right, received a discount.
Exhibit C.
In, in Exhibit C, the, the city resident fees are in black on, on the left-hand side and in red on the right side, the non-resident fees are listed in red.
Okay, I see.
To distinguish the two.
Okay, now I'm looking here on the, back onto Exhibit A.
Yes.
The Hollow Park, the house rent, three hundred and fifty dollars per month. Now, that is very reasonable. Is there any incentive? Is there a reason why that is so cheap? Is the people living there doing something for us? Or that's an awful nice house for three hundred and fifty dollars a month?
Bill, I'll speak up on this one, as I've been dealing with this a lot longer. That has been set by commission years ago. And, you know, that's something that we do not deal with, that, that's a lease agreement with, with the tenant that lives there. So it's at your option, I guess, to look at it and, and redirect or do whatever you would like to do, but that's not something that we handle.
Well, well, you know, I, I think it's time to raise the rent.
City staff would renegotiate that lease, and these proposals tonight on the fees are recommended by the Park Board, so the Park Board wouldn't renegotiate that lease. So that's the difference.
Yeah, so we could pass this as is and still, then look at that lease.
Well, we can definitely renegotiate the lease. It would come back, the ordinance would come back again if you're going to change that as well.
I mean, we can't change, we can't change that rent schedule then.
The commission can change it.
Yeah, why can't we? Let's, let's get some other numbers on there.
Well, we're gonna, I'm gonna have to pull the lease first because you have a current lease, so I need to see the term of the lease.
If I remember correctly, didn't the person who took care of the Hollow used to live in that house? Wasn't there somebody, a city employee who lived in there?
That is correct. There is a current city employee that does live in that house. And the gentleman does close the gate at night. He makes sure, he does check to make sure everyone is out of the park, and, and he does close that gate in the evening.
I thought there was somebody that oversaw the park, watched for things down there.
Yes.
That was one of the reasons the rent was less than what maybe a going rate would be. Well Stacy, do, do we want to?
Well, this, this is only a first reading.
Right, so do we want to look in at that lease then?
I can do that.
Okay. Bill, this is just the first reading, so we'll look at the lease and, and see what recommendations come back from Park Board. Okay, that, if, with no objection, does anyone in the audience wish to speak to this ordinance? If not, this will stand as the first reading of ordinance number four dash fifteen. Moving to resolution number R dash thirty-one dash fifteen.
An emergency resolution authorizing a purchase order to Valley Asphalt Corporate for the purchase of road salt for the street department.
Mr. Harder will provide the staff report.
We have used our allotment of salt, have ordered, and I believe we are down to about a hundred tons of our original salt supply with our Southwest Ohio purchasing for government that, you know, when we go out for bid, we, we've got that, we've used it, we can get no more. Valley Asphalt has contacted us and they have salt and we have bought a, a few tons to get us by, and that's why we're here now asking you for an emergency resolution to authorize us to buy more salt to get us through the rest of the season.
Yeah, well.
How is this price compared to what we paid on the state one?
I believe approximately a hundred and fifteen's what we paid with our original bid, and this is a hundred and fifty. We have added seven percent just in case there's a price increase due to their demand also. So, you know, we're looking at about thirty-five more dollars a ton.
Do, do you think that five hundred ton, will that get us through the rest of the winter, do you think?
I'm sure hoping so.
We hope the snow's gonna go away someday. Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this resolution? If not, do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Judy, did you have a question?
Well, I just wondered where, where this guy gets the salt if the other suppliers aren't able to get salt.
I don't know. I, I know there's a lot of them that get salt from overseas. So I, you know, I don't know where he's getting it from, but I can tell you this, it's very, very good. We used it this last snowstorm and it melts a whole lot better than what we originally purchased.
Black market salt. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second on resolution number thirty, R thirty-one dash fifteen. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Resolution number R dash thirty-one dash fifteen has been adopted. Resolution number R dash thirty-two dash fifteen.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Lebon Ford for the purchase of three Ford police interceptor utility vehicles.
Deputy Chief Steiner will provide the staff report tonight.
Good evening. This resolution to purchase the three police interceptor utility vehicles is related to the strategic fleet replacement plan that we started in the fall of two thousand and thirteen. At that time, we purchased two of these utility vehicles. They're based on the Ford Explorer to replace the two thousand and five Ford Expeditions that we purchased for supervisor vehicles prior to that. We've been very pleased with how those vehicles have been used and the other neighboring agencies, if you notice, most of them are also driving the same vehicle. It's very popular with the, with the agencies right now. In two thousand and fourteen, we continued the plan by purchasing three more, and this would just help us to continue it on into two thousand and fifteen. In two thousand and thirteen, when we bought the first ones, we experimented with doing our own city bid for the vehicles and ended up, nobody replied to the bid. I believe there was one email to finance saying that we can't compete with the state bid anyway. So instead of us looking to reinvent everything there, we're just planning on staying with the state bid. The resolution that follows this is directly related in that it has to do with upfitting those vehicles properly, police, for police use. Obviously, the light bars, the sirens, the, the prisoner containment areas, and, and basically what we need that's necessary to keep vehicles running. When, when they stopped making the Ford Crown Victorias, we couldn't move a lot of the equipment over like we had been before. So we need to purchase some of it new. We can still move over some equipment such as our computer and our camera system. So our, our budgeted amount for the vehicles is seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, with the actual expenditure being planned as seventy-seven thousand, thirty-one.
So Deputy Chief Steiner's report actually covers items five and six.
Thank you, Tom. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Deputy Chief? Anyone in the audience have any questions? If not, do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Move to adopt resolution R dash thirty-two dash fifteen.
Second.
We moved and seconded to adopt resolution number R dash thirty-two dash fifteen. Would the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner vote?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye. Resolution number R dash thirty-two dash fifteen has been adopted. Resolution number R dash thirty-three dash fifteen. You all heard Deputy Chief Steiner's explanation of this resolution as far as the equipment to, for the new cruisers. If you have any questions, I'm sure Tom will be able to answer it.
Yeah, how come this wasn't bid?
Well, we, we actually went through an informal bid when we got the first vehicles in two thousand and thirteen. We went with K E Rose out of Huber Heights at that time. They had the lowest prices for what we needed to do. We've been very pleased with the work that they've done. The workmanship's fine, the service has been great. So for standardization and consistency across our fleet, we would like to continue using the same company.
That bid was two years ago. And there's probably other companies that are just as capable, and they could be cheaper, and this should have been bid.
I actually did do informal quotes this time around.
Okay, where are they? They're not in our packet.
Okay, well, they were, it was just an informal quote system, and they did, K E Rose did still come out cheaper. Our main concern was more the standardization and the consistency. And, and we were looking at, wanted to make sure that they were still within reasonable price with the other businesses.
Yeah, but if you change companies and they're the lower bid every year, you have the consistency. It's just with a different company. It's no different.
I think, were you talking about consistency in price or consistency in equipment?
Consistency with how the equipment is installed.
Functional controls, basically, right?
Sure.
Is what you're talking about? But, they have whatever they're using, and then if, can't think of a good name to use, but let's say Bill's Ford does the same thing and does it cheaper, and if they're cheaper every time you upfit cars, you have the consistency and you have the same controls. They're just different controls.
So what are you, what's your suggestion, Commissioner?
I have serious issues with this whole thing not being bid.
I think it should be bid too. It's over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Do you want to table this resolution? Do you have time to do a bid on that? Tom?
Yes, we can do whatever the commission asks.
Do you want to table this then?
Yeah, I move we table this until bids are requested, received, and opened.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table resolution number R thirty-three dash fifteen until bids are received on it. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Could I, could I ask?
Oh, I'm sorry Judy.
Is this the same quote that was quoted us in 2013?
No, it's a slightly, there's a slightly different quotes for, are you talking about the vehicles or the outfitting?
Yeah, I mean, the fitting out of the, not the vehicles, but the fitting out, is it a large percentage more, or?
No, it's, I don't have the exact numbers with me, but no, it's very, it's very similar in price.
But we could find that out also?
Sure.
The difference...
When you did this in 2013, did you bid it out at that time?
We took quotes at that time from different businesses, yes.
And they were the lowest and best?
Yes.
Was it a formal bid or an informal bid in 2013?
It was an informal bid, because we did two vehicles, so it was less money involved with it.
You have a motion to table and a second on the floor, so you can't have discussion at this time, you need to take a vote.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye. Resolution number R dash thirty-three dash fifteen has been tabled. Resolution number R dash thirty-four dash fifteen.
A resolution requesting authorization to purchase the property located at 534-536 West Water Street.
Mr. Smeesing will provide the staff report.
Thank you. This item and the next two resolutions pertain to properties that Unity National Bank has expressed an interest in donating to the city. The properties in question are REO properties that Unity is currently the owner of. They have been advanced to, through the foreclosure process at the county level with no successful bids being submitted, and rather than continue with the foreclosure process over again, the bank has indicated an interest in donating those properties to the city, donating for a dollar. We'd be purchasing them for a dollar. In doing so, we would put the properties into our land reutilization program, which is geared towards taking non-productive properties and putting them back into productive use. In doing so, that's looking at the current conditions of the property to determine whether or not it is most suitable to be renovated, or if it's most suitable to be demolished. So, after going through that process, a determination would be made, and then the appropriate actions would be taken. So, if the commission adopts this resolution this evening, and the next two resolutions concerning the other properties, we would be then receiving the properties from Unity National Bank for a dollar. The only additional expenses would be any recording fees for the transaction in terms of the transfer of the deed, and that shouldn't be more than a couple hundred dollars. And then, once that happens, we would proceed with that evaluation process to determine the appropriate next course of action. I'd just like to emphasize that by doing this and being able to receive properties like this, we're able to put them back into productive use, whether that's building a house on them from a developer, or Habitat, or mode of own type program, if it's not, a lot's not big enough to be built on, or even rehabbing, having a developer rehab an existing facility that's structurally sound. It enables us to do that. Under the current way, the way, when we have dilapidated houses setting for years, we end up demoing, and the property remains in the property, in the original property owner's hands. Those lots may stay unmowed, unsightly and so forth, which just adds to it, but by the city getting the property, we then can get those back into some type of very productive use. So, I think seeing more and more of this happen is gonna be very beneficial to the city overall.
Commissioners, any questions?
Well, I have a, it's not a question, maybe it is. I'm just concerned, a couple of years ago, you know, we tried to change some ordinances that had to do with properties, and we met with lots and lots of resistance, obviously, at the ballot box. I think it's, it's, it's not good that we allow property owners to let these properties get into this
Condition?
state of repair before something like this has to be done. I really think that we need to, once again, look at ordinances having to do with upkeep and property maintenance, because if you go buy any of these three properties, they are truly dilapidated, and obviously, they couldn't be rented because they're in such a state. I don't know who would want to rent them, so I can imagine the people, it's easy to walk away from those things and drop them with the bank. The bank is doing the best thing in at least putting them in a land program that we could possibly reuse these properties for some other reason, or sell them, but it's too bad that we don't have any bite in our ordinances to keep these properties, and there's many more of them, from getting that way in the first place. And I really think we need to revisit property codes and, you know, not allow, not allow this to get beyond us, I guess, and that this, you know, that this wouldn't happen. You know, you wonder, it's no wonder that they're not rented, you know, they're terrible.
I agree with you Judy. One of the things that I wanted to note, it's very generous of Unity Bank to offer these properties to the city for a dollar each. They don't have to do that, but it's another way that they're helping serve the community, and we hope the other banks are, hopefully, it looks like they may be going to step up and help us in the same way, so we appreciate that very, very much. Do I have a motion on resolution number R dash thirty-five dash fifteen?
No move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to adopt resolution number R dash thirty-four dash fifteen. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye. Resolution number R dash thirty-five dash fifteen. This is continuation of the one that we just said. I just wanted to make a comment too, that we have discussed these three resolutions in executive session, so the commission has had a great, a good discussion on them. So, commissioners, do you have any questions on this one? Anyone in the audience wish to address this?
Really, we're in Mount Street, I just have a couple of comments about thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six, if I may be permitted to make them all at once. You made the comment, Commissioner Terry, about the properties being in the state they're in. I think what you're missing out on is the fact that all three of these properties are in the control of the banks. I don't think the banks, the banks have more properties than they know what to do with. Therefore, unfortunately, some of them fall through the cracks, and they're allowed to get dilapidated. It happens. I don't think any ordinances in the world are going to stop that from happening, unfortunately, unless we put tighter ordinances on the bank, put the onus on the banks to keep them up. Second comment I have is, two years ago, when the city manager Huff first came to Pittwa, he created a program, if I remember correctly, called the HELP program, Housing Enhancement League of Pittwa. And it's kind of, for lack of better terms, become moribund, and nothing has been done with it. Now, my question is, why can't the Housing Enhancement League take on at least some of these foreclosed properties, bring them up to code, and then maybe we can have, we won't have the problems we're having with them? Thank you.
We're planning to look at those properties and see what's the best usage for them is, Brad, and honestly, I think by the time the banks get a lot of these properties, they're totally beyond the banks even keeping them up. There's, I don't know, Gary, do you want to comment on that?
Well, I think that certainly that's a huge concern for us. One of the things we're trying to do, Brad mentioned about HELP, is reinstituting some of the work that's done there through our new development program manager, and coordinating some of those efforts with funding from the CDBG that we're applying for, and some redevelopment efforts that we're seeing happen in some areas. I think it's important that we do reach out and help the neighborhoods, and part of the CDBG funding that we're going after is for neighborhood assistance to help homeowners improve their homes and so forth. So, I think there, we do have a lot of things in the works and plans to do that, and that's one of the highest priority items that we have, is to try to help and restore some of the neighborhoods, remove some of the really dilapidated properties that can't be reused, and hopefully, hopefully they can be redeveloped either into, as part of the neighborhood, or into commercial properties, or whatever. So, our development staff, all of them are working quite a bit to pull together a lot of ideas. We're working with Miami County on a land utilization program to build those landbanks and be able to offer up properties for commercial development, or new housing starts and things like that. So, opportunities for people that may not have opportunity to build a home, such as maybe veterans, or Habitat, or different things like that. So, a lot of things in the works, and a lot of things that we're working on to move forward with at this time.
And just one other comment on your comments, Brad. A lot of this is not due to the banks letting the properties depreciate or get where they are, it's done before that, before they're closed, and a lot of them are the rental properties here in the city. There's just no doubt about that.
I need to reiterate that too. These properties did not get that way since the bank has taken over in the foreclosure.
They were that way before, that's why they're being closed. So, anyway, we're, we have a motion, or a resolution on the floor. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number R dash thirty-five dash fifteen. Would the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Resolution number R dash thirty-six dash fifteen, another of the property. I think you've heard, this is the same as the two prior resolutions. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this resolution? Commissioners?
Move to adopt resolution R dash thirty-six dash fifteen.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number R dash thirty-six dash fifteen. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Fess?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Resolution number R dash thirty-six dash fifteen has been adopted. This brings us to the time in our agenda when we ask for public comment. Anyone in the audience who wishes to address the commission, please come to the podium in the center of the room and state your name and address. If we have no one, we'll move to the city manager's report.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder, the commission members have received ballots for the boards and commission members. We've had several people apply for the various boards and committees, and we need your votes on those. We also have some additional vacancies still available. Stormwater, we have three openings, and City Service Commission, we have one opening. I would like to comment, as a result of our last meeting pertaining to electric bills, and we had approximately about sixty residents attend the February seventeenth meeting, and we had twenty-five speakers at the event. Thirty-four actually signed up for review of the utility buildings that we request, buildings as we requested in the meeting, and since that meeting, our utility building office has met or talked with on the phone over five hundred citizens that have come forward and reviewed their bills and gone over them and so forth, and we continue to do that still. During that whole process, we found only one error, and that was in a meter reading that was misread, and it was simply corrected. But what's really happening is the new electric rate is working correctly, and it's calculated correctly. The higher bills, as we found from going through all these bills, is simply more kilowatt-hours used in electric, and that's the simple fact. We've had two additional zones that have been built since the last commission meeting with no issues that we've heard of or anything. So, we continue to ask customers that have a question about their utility bill to, please contact the utility billing office at seven seven eight two thousand, and either talk to them on the phone, or come in and meet with staff, and they can have their bill analyzed to make sure that there are no issues and errors from that standpoint. Also, one of the important thing, and as a result of all that, it has been pretty clear of the, you know, during this time period, this last building, a lot of kilowatt-hours were used for heat and other purposes, and one of the things that would be helpful if residents, and we have these booklets downstairs and throughout the building, it's called Energy Managers for Your Home booklet, and this gives helpful hints on how you can do things to help reduce your energy costs, and look at things that, identify things that may be running your bill up that really needs to be looked at. So, we'll hope that people will pick those up and do a kind of a self-analysis of what's happening in their home to hopefully reduce the amount of electric that's being used. So, but we are available and continue to work with citizens daily to answer questions, but we're confident that we're, that there were no errors on our part as far as the rate was concerned. So, with that, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Gary. Commissioner Wilson?
The, let's see, March fourteenth is the Kiwanis Pancake Day out at the Upper Valley Career Center. It's the sixtieth anniversary, and apparently, the first one in nineteen fifty-five actually had Aunt Jemima serving at the first event, which I didn't, didn't know that. And, of course, I was just born that day, so I didn't go, but, but it's a really nice event, it only, it costs six dollars for adults and three dollars for twelve and under children, and that's all you can eat, and all the monies go to various youth activities. They have scholarships and a lot of variety of things they use the money for, so it's all very well spent, and I think even more is, it's really fun to go there, because you'll see half the people you know in town will be there eating or working, so good place to help the community, without even knowing you're helping the community by buying a ticket. So, anyway, it's March fourteenth, seven AM to two PM.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Terry?
Well, I just wanted to reiterate about the Safe Routes to School that we passed this evening. I want to let people know who are concerned that I personally am going to keep an eye on things along College Street, and hopefully, we won't have any problem, but if we do, it's good to know, and I hate it that it's kind of last minute that we found out that it's good to know, that if there is a change needed, once that reverts back to the city's designation, that we could make changes there if they're needed, and I'm going to keep my eye on it, and we'll be happy to bring it up again when the city is able to make those decisions on their own.
That in? Thank you, Judy. Commissioner Martin?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Vogt?
Well, I made an amendment to that ordinance, then I voted no on it, voted no on it for the simple reason, I didn't think it was a safe route, a good deal to begin with. I've mentioned a couple of times, it was a bunch of crap, the way they went about it, and rather than give them the benefit of the doubt that they did a good job for me, I'm saying, no, I didn't vote on it, that's one reason. Another thing I got, before the meeting, last meeting we had, I want to apologize to Bill... to Bill Jacqua, I was very rude to him, and I'm not usually that way. So, Bill, I'm sorry. And then, this weekend, at Kroger's, and the bank, and different places, I had never been treated so badly by the citizens of Pickwa complaining about our streets and our electric and the snow removal. Now, I do not talk to you that way. I did to Bill Jacqua the other day, but I just apologize for that. If you can't say something in a nice way to one of the commissioners, just don't say anything at all. When it comes time to vote next time, don't vote for us, okay? But I'm tired of taking a bunch of crap from all the people in this town, because it only pays thirteen cents an hour. So, that's all I have to say.
Commissioner, just a couple of things. I want to announce that on next Saturday at Hallmark, Reed Mar, Reed Mar-Hallmark down in downtown, they'll be selling the Dancing with the Pickwa Stars tickets, and Stacy, what's the date of that? Do you remember? April eleventh. There will be two performances. One is a matinee, and I think they have desserts for that, and then there's a dinner performance in the evening. And if you've never been there, it's really, really a wonderful, wonderful event, and it's going to be really special this year, because we have our law director who's going to be dancing the waltz, and our economic development director, assistant city manager, who's going to be dancing the foxtrot. So, please support your Pickwa Stars, and make sure that you get down there early, because those tickets don't really last a long time. They go pretty quickly, and we're all looking forward to that Dancing with the Pickwa Stars. Also, Commissioner Wilson mentioned about the pancake days, and Gretchen Roth had sent me some information. I found it very interesting. She asked me if I would share it with the people, and it's titled History of Kiwanis Club Pancake Day, and it reads, "Twenty fifteen marks the sixtieth anniversary celebration of the Kiwanis Club Pancake Day as a community event in Pickwa. The event, which began in nineteen fifty-five at Green Street United Methodist Church, was initially chaired by Dr. Kenneth Lyon. Pancakes were served by Aunt Jemima at the October twenty-ninth inaugural date event. In nineteen sixty-two, the armory became the new site of the event chaired by Lee Vanderford, and Aunt Jemima again made an appearance to help with serving. Walter Schumacher initiated the use of carousel pancake grills in nineteen sixty-three, and they have been used continuously over the years. John Boehner spoke to Kiwanis in two thousand and purchased the first pancake ticket for that year. The club voted to move the annual Pancake Day to the Upper Valley JVS, now the Upper Valley Career Center, in two thousand and seven, where the event is still being held today. The location of Kiwanis Pancake Day has changed since its inception, but the event still features all-you-can-eat pancakes, sausage, applesauce, and a variety of drinks. Cost of the tickets is six dollars for adults and three dollars for students twelve and under. This year's event is Saturday, March fourteenth, from seven a.m. to two p.m. at the Upper Valley Career Center in Pickwa. For more information or to purchase tickets, call Ryan Raderman at seven-seven-three-one-six-seven-one, or email ryan.raderman@edwardjones.com, or contact Dean Brewer at six-one-five-one-zero-three-four, or email dbrewer@unitynationalbank.com. Proceeds from the Pancake Day are used to provide activities for the youth of the Kiwanis community. Kiwanis Club annually sponsors scholarships for graduating seniors from Pickwa High School and Lehman Catholic High School, supplies plaques for the Pickwa City Schools' annual spelling bee, supports the Salvation Army Christmas Kettle Campaign, Kiwanis Civic Band, Kiwanis Chamber of Commerce Top One Hundred banquet, the Key Club Relay for Life, holds new teacher luncheons annually, and supplies the Church Directory of Kiwanis churches for the Kiwanis area. In addition, the club provides funds for Kiwanis Salvation Army Summer Lunch Program, Camp Courageous, purchases infant carriers in conjunction with the Troy Kiwanis Club to qualified new mothers at UVM-C, buys books for Kiwanis City and Kiwanis Catholic Schools, sponsors the annual Kiwanis Halloween Parade, along with sponsorship of Kiwanis youth groups at Kiwanis High School and Kiwanis Junior High School, Washington Intermediate, Wilder Intermediate, and Spring Creek Primary Schools. The Kiwanis Club meets weekly on Wednesdays at noon at the Bistro Room, eighteen-seventy-six Commerce Drive in Pickwa. Reservations for lunch must be made by Monday at noon prior to the meeting. For more information about Kiwanis Club, contact Gretchen Roth at seven-seven-eight-zero-three-two-five, or email groth@wh.rr.com. Quote, "Kiwanis is a global organization of volunteers dedicated to changing the world, one child and one community at a time," unquote. I want to thank Gretchen for providing that information, which I found to be pretty interesting. Actually, if you look at all the things that are done by our service organizations here in the community, it would be a great loss for any of them to not be operating the way they are. So if you go eat your pancakes, you now know where that money's going, and it certainly is being spread around the community. And as Joe said, you can go out there and see all your friends and your family, and they're either there eating, or they're there working. So, enjoy the Pancake Days on the fourteenth, and hopefully, we'll see you out there. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.